Wesleyan, Wesleyan.
A little arrow, the down arrow.
Yeah, is that?
There you go.
That's it.
That's at the law school.
Where, where is?
Texas Wesleyan has been purchased by what?
Well, the law school.
Well, if I knew they bought the law school. Oh, yeah. That's actually kind of a good thing for Tarrant County, don't you think?
I'm, I'm going to call the meeting to order, but before we commence with our business, each of you will find in your seats a little gift bag. And this is, I, I don't even know what's in them, but they're from the northwest campus. Today was the big day of the opening of the firing range. And these are for you as a memento. And before you get into them tonight, I want you to read the program and read the resumes of the staff, the faculty and coordinators and director who are in charge of this program. We've always known that we have terrific people at Tarrant County College, but these resumes will just blow you away. And Dr. Blanc, I hope you'll convey to all of them and all of your faculty and staff our congratulations on a really impressive project and our best wishes for continued success.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone's support.
Did you get the proposal for each one? The pro- yes. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. And before we start our business, we do have one comment from a citizen, Mr. Jack Langdon.
Yes, that, that has been withdrawn at this time. I'll do it at another time.
All right. Thank you. So, tonight, our work is about the budget. And we'll ask the chancellor to proceed, and she has others who will join her at the podium.
Good evening, board members, and a special hello to all of our faculty, staff, and other administrators. Thank you so much for joining us for this workshop this evening. This is workshop number five. Ms. Carter, workshop number five. Okay. Just want to make sure. Everybody was listening because we've had so much fun coming to you with the various iterations of, not just really the iterations of the budget, but to give you background information on what the lay of the land looks like in higher education in Texas, to look at the changes that have been made at the state level, both by the coordinating board as well as the legislature, to look at the new funding mechanism that we're going to have starting this fall, where 10% of our funding will come from success points. And tonight, we have gone through four different sessions, and tonight, we are going to present to you the proposed budget. And you've listened to me each one of the other four times, and so tonight, most of the voices you will hear will come from this wonderful leadership team that we have here at Tarrant County College. And so. Now it's on. I hope you noticed your new screen back here. We want to give Tim Marshall and his staff a great thank you for that. We understand by the end of the month, we'll have the two new ones over here, but doesn't that make a major difference? It's very, very good. So, thank you, Tim. One of the things you hear me say all the time is that I really appreciate all the great work that Shirley Birch does for us in putting together the budget presentations with all of the pretty pictures. And so, you will now hear from various Calt members as they walk you through the 2013-14 proposed budget. And Mark McLendon, our CFO, is going to start us off. And we're going to talk with you about the 2013-14 budget process summary, the Calt budget planning initiatives, capital improvement projects, then we'll go to the proposed budget. And at that point, I'll come back up with that along with the recommendations. And we have a special time set aside for your questions and answers, however, or questions and discussions, please feel free to stop any one of the Calt members during his or her presentation. There will also be time after each one completes for you to question him or her before the next person comes up. Mr. McLendon, you're up next. Thank you.
Madam Chancellor, Mrs. Appleman, members of trustees, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. What we're going to try to do is do a little bit of history here. All right? Okay. Next slide. Okay. In the budget cycle, I know that a lot of y'all have had the opportunity, but we always want to share that good information with everybody so they know how we've put this budget together, especially our citizens. Okay? The first thing, we're going to plan and assess. We look at the development of a budget through planning and assessments, and we'll discuss a little bit more of this in the next coming slides. At the same time, we're going to propose a budget to our trustees, and they're going to, this is going to be a preliminary review to see it. We're going to adopt the budget in the next coming session. Hopefully, the trustees will give us their, their guidance and to be able to adopt in that. And then, in the last phase, we're going to monitor. Now, when we look at the monitoring, going to, sorry, sorry. When we go to the monitoring phase there, first of all, we look at it, and purchasing does the first part of the monitoring process. They will ensure that they get the practical, the best purchases and the best buys that we can, at the same time of ensuring compliance with our state policies. The next things we will do, the departments and divisions and Calt members will look at their respective budgets, and they will be monitoring their budgets against what has actually happened to what they're proposing. The third thing is finance, takes a holistic view of a budget, and it looks at, are we spending cash holistically in the way that we thought it? The last, the next section is the board. Every month, I know that this is one of your highlights, we cover all in each and every one of the expenses. You get to interactive in that part of seeing how the budget carries out through the whole period of the year. At the end, the, the board is also empowered because every expenditure that is greater than 100K, you're making a decision. So, you're not only on the first part of the budget as you look at it, but you're all through the process, both the staff and the trustees are part of an integrated process that we think works rather well. Okay. Next slide. Okay. So, if we look at it, when we look at the, the. Oh, now I see. When we look at the. I can eat. No. Hello? No? Checking? Probando, probando? Oh, checking? All right. Is that good? No, I don't think we're getting it. Is that better? All right. I think it's on right now. Is that good? Okay. Okay. I'll try to, I'm going to go this on my own height. Okay. So, you have three components. So, when we looked at the process of our budget, we first had new and existing, we had existing requirements from our Calt, and we looked at that. After that, new requirements were put together, and these new requirements were reviewed by the JCC, by the Calt, later by the chancellor. As we went through the detailed process of the budget, we also shared this, and eventually we came to where we have a proposed budget, and that is what you have tonight. All right? So, now, I want, I thought we would go back, if you don't mind, I wanted to go back down history lane, just to show you all the things that we cover in our budget process. So, when the public enlarge, and just to remind you of all the things, is how we develop this process. All right? So, in the, in the first meeting that we had in the month of February, we took an overview of the budget, we looked at our assumptions, and we presented for some questions and answers. That was the first time we got some input from our trustees. The next meeting, which was on the 18th of April, okay, we asked, we presented some of the information we had from the coordinating board, we talked about success points, and we talked about the SB number one, as it was going through the state legislator. Okay? When we looked at the July the 18th meeting, we talked a little bit more about legislative funding, success points, benefits updates, student sticky paces, Calt requests, faculty requests, and estimated revenues. Okay? On the 31st, you kind, you got to see how we had come, and we looked, we gave you probably, I think it was a really good view of what our district metrics were. I think the chancellor really showed you a lot of the initiatives that we do through the project, and though this is, this was more of a qualitative view of how, what we do and how the budget impacts that, some cost savings, because we're continuously looking at that for higher efficiencies. And we gave you a preliminary budget. Again, we came back and said, trustees, give us some of your thoughts. So, how we put this together. Okay. And here we are. When we look at all the different dates of Calt retreats, this is where we have taken not only the opinion of the Cals, but we included our JCC, and in various meetings, they have been giving us their opinion. So, when we come up with a proposed budget, it's been an influence of many thoughts in a long process. So, now, I, I wanted to talk a little bit about our assumptions on what is coming through with this budget. All right? Next slide. Okay. So, the first assumption that we have going forward to you is there is no increase in tuition. Okay? The second assumption, we told you, limited growth. We may be proved wrong. There may be some more growth, but we will see how it looks, and we will know that at registration. We also told you tax valuation. We thought that it was probably going to be between around 3%, and it was effectively. It was 3% valuation, and that represented about 8.7 mill growth in our property value. Okay? Now, we also said revenue stability. Now, this is one of the ingredients that a lot of the, the agencies that look at when they categorize the predictability is how predictable is your revenue? And when we looked at the categories, and we'll probably go in a little bit more further on, only 20% of our revenue comes from the state. So, that, in the state being as a governing body, it is more likely, there has been some changes in, in sometimes in state budgets, so if it was going to go down, only 20% of your revenue would be affected. And for it to be a, a large effect on that 20, it would be very difficult from some institutions who have a higher dependency on state revenue than we do. We have diversified our revenue because our revenue is based on tuition, that is from your incoming students. You also have your property values, which, if I may say, probably North Texas, not only Tarrant County is probably some, has some of the most staunchest growth patterns in our nation. So, the property values there are reasonably. We are, we haven't seen what we've seen in some other states. So, it is a good predictable, and we feel comfortable in the ability to predict on that basis now and going forward. And the last thing is expenditures. We feel that we have expenditure predictability. The reason why is while they may vary between one category and the other, when we look at holistically our expenses, five-year programs, we see that the, the movement of these expenses are relatively predictable. And that is because our trustees have taken on the option of using pay-as-you-go. And I'm going to show you in the coming slide how well that has worked for this board. All right? Okay. If you look at standards and pores says, states that the predictability or the financial strength of an organization is with the ability of having at least three months of extra revenue to cover its total expenses. If you look at the red column, that is your three months of expenses, and if you look at the white column, that's your fund balance at the end of the year. So, if we take the year 2009, you would say that three months, that is, if you took your total expenditures for the year, you divided by 12 and multiplied it by three, that's how much you would need to run three months. Typically, bond covenants ask three months. At that time, in 2009, probably TCC was able to cover at least, I would say, four months. So, that is, you're above the average. If you look at your expenditures for 2010, you will see that again, your, your fund balance allows you to cover four months. If you go to 2011, you're a little bit, the same thing, four months. In 2012, we've gone up to about five months, and in 2013, we're looking at probably six months. Some corporate organizations say that having enough funds to be able to manage your expenses for six months is a good thing to have. It's, it's, it gives you, it's a strength of stability. But I also want to speak not only for myself or for the people who've been here before, if you look at the variability of your expenses is so low, that means that your expenses are very predictable. If you look at, your expenses are going from $63 million to 66, that means pay-as-you-go has been working for this organization, and it's been working rather well because you're able to predict and live within the constraints of your means. And this is how you would be able to interpret it from a fiscal perspective. Okay? All right. Okay. So, now, I wanted to kind of, I wanted to go back, in the month of April, we covered some ratios. But I would like to revisit how the Department of Education, the coordinating board, and external auditors in other colleges define financial stability, and briefly discuss the importance of what that means to an organization like Tarrant County College. I will be happy to, to show you detailed iterations if you want to after, or at any time. I think we have Mr. Vick and, and even everything we can bring and show you all the way down to the CAFR. But I'd like to just talk now, in generality, what these ratios mean, and what is financial strength and weakness? Probably something like that, so everybody should be able to understand that and, and work there. So, financial analysis measures the success against an institutional objective, and the way that you do it is, can I do the planning that I want to do? And in order to do this, you need to assess the health of an institution because it is not only to deliver the planning, but it is, how do you finance the planning that you want to deliver? And so, all organizations, I believe, always have want to and will want to deliver on these financials, but sometimes it is economic constraints that stop them. So, what, how, how would you assess a financial stability or strength of an organization like this? Okay. The first thing is, does the institution, is it capable of carrying out its current programs? Can it do what it says it's going to do, and does it do it all the way throughout its fiscal cycle? The second thing is, is the institution able to carry out programs into the future? If we looked at 2010, and we said in 2010, we're going to do these things for 2015, can an organization fiscally deliver on the plans that it would like to do? And that's simply what it, it measures that. So, there's two, probably two dimensions to look at this. First is, are resources sufficient and flexible enough to support your mission? The second thing, does asset performance and management support your direction? Are you using the funds in the way that you planned we're going to do it? And did you do what you say what you were going to do? Okay? Just from a fiscal perspective, because that's, that's the area that, that I am most concerned, and that's the area that I represent. Okay? And people before me. When you look at the fiscal strength of an organization, a fiscal strength of an organization is happened through time. So, I was handed off, and I continue what somebody else has done. Right? Okay. And to operate and results indicate the institution is living within the means that it is able to live within. All right? So, a widely accepted metric is called the CFI, a composite financial index. It's often used to address four questions, and, and the questions above was, do you have resources? Are the resources used? Are they performing? And do you do that? Now, how did they come about this index? Because that was a question that I had when I went from the corporate world to the not-for-profit, how we measure this? Because I was always looking at different indexes and different measures, but how do we do this in a not-for-profit? And so, they said, so KPNG, which is a, a renowned external auditor, said, this is an index that's going to let you know what's your financial strength, and they, they shared it with the Department of Education, other colleges and universities are using it, and so also the coordinating board. So, I thought first of all, I would describe it pictorially, and then we can look at where we are and where the other top 10 community colleges. So, on your board, if you look at, it says, this is the strategic analysis for higher education. How do you measure the strength of a financial education? First of all, if your CFI, and we will go on what is a CFI made, we'll tell you how it's calculated, but if you have a CFI between a negative one and one, it means you've got a financial problem. You have to address that problem before you can do anything else. If you're between a one and a three, you need to re-engineer your institution. Before you think about long-term, you've got to think, how can I get myself to a certain place to where I can look at a stabilize in my institution? If you're looking at between a three and a five, you're saying, well, I want to transform my information. I wanted, how do I get my organization to be a little bit different? If you go from a five to a seven, you're thinking about, well, now that I am balanced and transformed, how do I go and look at the future? If you go from a seven to a nine, you, you're allowed, you have fiscal ability to maintain a balanced budget, you're able to go forward, and you're able to say, well, now I want to look at new things. If you're, if you're between an eight and a 10, you have a robust mission that you can face up to. That is, so what the CFI does is it tells you by looking at four indices. Okay? So, let's talk about the indices, and then we'll go to the next chart. What it's saying is it takes, one indice is not enough to be able to do it. So, it takes return on net assets, operating margin, primary reserve, and viability ratio. So, could we go to the next slide? So, we thought we'd show you now, this is. So we thought we'd show you now, this is the scorecard. And this is factual information based on self-reported numbers to the Coordinating Board. Every community college reports its number through carrot, and now we'll look at it. So let's, let's talk a little bit of what it means, how they built it, and what does it mean to every institution? And what does our institution look like? And what has been the work? Because this is a report card on the trustees today and the trustees of past years, because it's giving you your financial strength. So the first composite, it's telling you, you'll see on the left-hand side, we put all the top 10 community colleges in order, right? And the next one is the CFI, which is that index. We can look at the index, but I wanted to show you how this was compromised, what was the four numbers that they used to make that index, okay? And what the index says is that, in order to create a reasonable way of understanding an institution, rather than looking at one, you look at four. Because they said, it's better, it's a better representation of economy to look at four indexes rather than one. So let's look at one by one. Now, the first index I would like to talk is return on net assets. And if you look at the return on net assets, okay, sorry. Okay, the return on net assets, what does it tell you? Is an institution financially better than a year ago? So, is, if you look at this ratio, and I spent a lot of time with Nancy looking at this ratio, it's counterintuitive. Because if you look at this ratio, it shows that a statewide value, the average, is 7.10, and they really want you to have a plus, over a plus-six, they would say. However, if you look at, you would say, well, why is Tarrant, that's, why are they only at 5.6? And the reason why Tarrant is at such 5.6, if you look at what the formula says, it's the change of net assets over the total assets. I think the trustees and other members have to be very proud, because if you look at the total net assets in 50 schools, Tarrant County alone has more than 20% of that value. We almost have $1 billion in net assets. The other community colleges, the reason why their indices are higher is because they have lesser net assets. And I would tell you that later on, I'm gonna give you a comparison. For example, Alamo has about $285 million in net assets. Austin has only $100 million in net assets. That is, the net assets is the property and equipment and everything that you own. If you look at, for example, Dallas is probably the highest one with $470 million, and Houston has $331 million. And if you look at Lone Star, it has 265. And there's Little Tarrant College with $1 billion in net assets. It represents 20% of the state of Texas. That is an incredible feat to be able to have such a large net asset in the hands of one sole institution. So let's look at some other indices that we have, right? So the next indices is, we're gonna look at operating margins. So we, we look at the operating margins, again, Tarrant, the operating margins tells you, it indicates an operating surplus or deficit in a fiscal year. So you want a positive ratio. So you can see that definitely Tarrant is right up above there. Collin, you see, has a very strong, Houston has a, also a strong one, but, but again, you must look at four indices to see what is your health. You can't base it on one. And then South Texas, we know. We know that organizations that have less assets will also have less expenses. Then the other, the next ratio is the primary reserve. So the primary reserves measures your financial strength and flexibility, and how long an institution can survive without net assets being generated, alright? So the standard is at least 1.4, so if you take, that's about 1.4 times 12, means it wants you to have about two months. Again, right now, if you look at TCC's ratio on primary reserve is about .6, that means it can survive seven months. Again, you want a longer period of time for, for be able to do that. And then the last one is the viability ratio, which shows you how much of their debt can an institution pay off with existing resources. So the state average is about 4.42, but TCC can pay 54%. This ratio, again, is counterintuitive, because this is a ratio that does, excludes general obligation bonds. So we will look at that. We will look at the general, I know Mr. Greenhill has me on task, and I'm happy, we will look at the general obligation bonds also. But if you look at these four indices, now let's go back to the first column, this is how you rate your institution. So if you look at the indices, let's just, this, these four are taken in a percentage, and they create a composite index, alright? So what is a composite index for everybody? A composite index is like looking at the Dow, or the FTSE has another composite index. But if you look at Alamo, it's saying it's on 2.28. It is right above two. Under two is a challenge. If you go to the next one, Austin, Austin has a red triangle there, meaning it has a critical financial position. It's a critical, because if you look at the four compromises, it, it has a lot of, and you're gonna see some of the challenges that it has. Collin, Collin is solid. It's got a number 10. But we knew that, because Collin, Collin has one of the highest tax bases in the state. We already expected that. But it's a good, they also are doing a good job. We need to recognize it's not only having revenue, is following what these indices are saying, what do you do with the revenue that you have? And Collin is doing a great job, there's no doubt about it. If we look at Dallas, it's over two, it's into three, so Dallas is, is coming out, it's looking. If we went to the other chart, we would tell you that a, I'm sorry. Sorry, here's this, three is, they're starting their institutional processes. That's probably what a three would look at. So let's go back to the, to the CFIs again. So if we look at their, El Paso, being close to two means you have to cover your bases. And Houston has a 4.9, is five. The numbers, Houston has also just recently added a little bit more debt, and that may change some of the parameters. But Houston at a five would be considered good. If you look at San Jacinto, and South Texas are also at 10, Tarrant is sitting at 10. 10 means you're fully robust to be able to carry out a robust mission for you. This is where the chancellor has the fiscal and financial stability to say, I am going to tackle on achieving the dream, and she has the resources to be able to do this through an entire organization our size. She has the financial support to do that, or if she has the financial support to buy a building or to invest in a program. She has the strength, and that strength has been built by previous, you didn't get there. To be able to have $1 billion in assets, this has been built by the trustees and, and financial people and the whole organization over the period, and that's an enviable position to be in, alright? So now, and if we look at that, so let's look at two other ratios. I think it's good to not only look at that, but we need to look at some other ratios as we're looking at our strength. So we know by the CFI, we have a strong position, but we should look at a couple of other indicators, right? So, okay, so the additional indicators, so CFI is certainly one indicator, but there's two other additional indicators that I would like to bring to your attention. And the first one is the equity ratio. So if you look at the equity ratio, it's, it's showing you how much can it, how leveraged is an organization? If you look at TCC, out of the 50 community colleges, it has the highest. So TCC percentile can borrow more funds than any other community college in Texas. And if we were to go nationally, I think we would be on a very good scale. Just, it, it shows a strong robustness. I know, Mr. Greenhill, these are facts, I'm just telling you the facts, I'm, you know, I'm just telling you, these are factual information, and I used, I use external auditors, so there's no subjectivity. Now, if you look at the, (laugh) sorry. I, I just think that the board has done a great job, and previous boards have done it, and I just wanted to recognize, I feel very proud to be in this institution, but the numbers don't lie. These are factual information, and I'm just trying to express it to, to the public and to our great trustees. Leverage. If you look at the leverage ratio, now this ratio, I am, it is a ratio, I have to go by how it is formed, it, it's how much do you have, it's your long-term debt. However, it excludes general obligation bonds. The reason they do it is, we know that, because those are set, and the tax entity, so, Tarrant County College has none. So I thought I would talk a little bit about debt, alright? Okay, so here's my, I'm sorry. Where's my, okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, let's talk about the debt in the Big Ten community colleges. If we look at Alamo, Houston, Lone Star, what we have, first of all, we named the college, we tell you it's a general obligation bond, just to, so that everybody understands, a general obligation bond is a bond that is approved by the taxpayer, and that taxpayer sets a tax structure in order to pay that. So that money always comes out. A revenue bond is a bond that is set without going directly to the taxpayer, it takes the trustees of a board to do it, but that money comes out directly out of your expenses. So that's a first time, I would say that's one of your expenses that you have to pay. Now, I'd like to, what I did is, I wanted to compare the number of the debt, and I wanted to compare it to your net assets. That's how much do you actually own versus how much are you in debt to? Because that's the way we look at it in industry. We would look at that, and I, I don't think that's a bad way to look at it. If you look at Alamo, Alamo has a total of $972 million in debt. It has a net asset base of 225. So it's in debt about four times its net assets. Just a number. We know all these community colleges, we have a lot of respect, we, we think, but the financial situations are things that you go through a process of time. We just wanted to highlight how you choose to do business. Houston has net assets of $331 million. Today, Houston is probably sitting on $1.2 billion of debt, total debt. If you look at Lone Star, they've got about $269 million, their debt is about $900 million, okay? Austin has net assets of $100 million, and they have a debt of 670. So that is why they have been termed in financial distress. Dallas is probably more balanced than the other, it's sitting on $469 million of net assets, and it has a debt of $570 million, okay? San Jacinto, now is where we are, is looking at $212 million of debt with $534 million of, I'm sorry, $212 million of net assets with $534 million of total debt. Now, if we look at El Paso, now we see the situation is turning. Because now, El Paso has net assets of $125 million, but it has a debt of 80 million. This is the direction that people would like to be. It's not always what you want is how it is. South Texas has about $293 million in net asset, it has a debt of $63 million. Collin County, again, we have mentioned, the strength of Collin County, has about $418 million of net assets with $60 million of debt. And the, probably the most robust in, in the community colleges in Texas, and probably one of the most robust in the nation, is Tarrant County College. It has net assets of 979, it's nearly a billion dollars, and it has a debt of $24 million. Today, if you looked at our financials, they're sitting on 16, because these figures are 2012. I think this is, it just speaks that you have a very strong balance sheet in Tarrant County College. Now, on that note, I would like to invite Dr. Jordan to continue with the next part. Thank you. I'm sorry, is there any financial questions? Yes, ma'am?
One question based on the foundation bond. Which college did this student have the most resistance?
Houston, Houston had it.
Was it that it was a failure?
I, failed is a, failed is a difficult word for me to answer. Houston, the one that I know, and I only know the Texas, ma'am, Houston just passed it, it was just recently passed. The one that was previous to, of the big ones, I, I don't know of some of the smaller ones, was Lone Star. And Lone Star, when we talked to Cindy, who is the CFO, we were talking to her about a year and a half ago, and they made one trial, and it didn't seem, but then they went ahead, and they did get it passed, and they were doing. So those are the last two that I know. Any, any other one, Nancy? Are you good with that? Okay, so that's, those are the two. As far as failing, I, I am not aware, ma'am. I know that the first thing that they tried to do, they changed it, but I can't tell you that she went to the voter, and the voter turned her down, ma'am. I just know that she changed her plan, okay? Any other questions? Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm so grateful to our media folks that I don't have to use my manly voice.[1569.01][1569.01](laughter) Thank you. Chancellor Hadley, Ms. Appleman, members of the board, I'm really thrilled to be here with you this evening, as I always am to visit with you. I would like to begin by saying thank you for your commitment to the South Campus. Because of your commitment to the projects that we put forward last year, we're doing quite well. We have accomplished most of them with the help of our facilities and real estate team. So I want to start on that note of saying thank you. So this coming year, we propose to focus on three key aspects of the strategic plan. And these, the items that I'm gonna talk about fall under the strategic plan goal or objective of assessing and improving engagement, and I'll start with that one. We plan to focus a good deal on strategies to increase full-time enrollment for undergraduate students. And the reason for this is that we are looking to promote greater persistence and engagement of students. And we know that when students attend part-time, they tend not to engage as much or as fully with faculty and their peers. Also, expanding our supplemental instruction in gateway programs. Supplemental instruction is a program whereby students who have done well in a particular course come back and sit through that course for pay, of course, and work with the faculty member and those students to provide tutorial assistance. Under Objective 3.8, enhance employee engagement and satisfaction, this is a particular area of focus for me, largely because we've gone through many changes this year, including changes in our facilities, renovation of buildings. I'm not gonna be surprised if some of our faculty can't find their offices when they get back on Monday. But with all of those changes, I want to make sure that I'm focusing with our faculty and staff to really develop a plan that includes strengthening communications through use of monitors and other media. I also want to make sure that we are expanding social and cultural events and community activities on the campus in order to create a greater sense of campus pride and spirit. And finally, I want to make sure that we are working with faculty to use office hours to promote faculty mentoring and greater collaboration on campus. And finally, Objective 2.2, we want to focus on expanding access to education through alternative learning opportunities. The Prowley Center that you've supported here is a place where we want to expand our offerings. We have started to do dual-credit courses there. We have started to do dual credit courses there last spring and summer. And this, a few weeks ago, as a matter of fact, we received permission from Saks to offer 100% of our associate degree offerings at that, at that site. We want to start the construction phase for the Energy Technology Center. And thanks to the generosity and foresight of this board, we will be hopefully breaking ground for that facility this fall. And then there is continuing to plan for the South Campus Scholars Academy, or Charter School on the South Campus. I'm really excited about that project and our partnership. And at this point, we are waiting to hear from TEA to get some, some recommendations for moving forward on our MOU. And finally, I want to talk about adding administrative support. One of the things that we are asking in, in this budget for is the opportunity to fund for the South Campus, five additional administrative positions. They include two office assistants, one for our Crowley Center, the other for our Family Empowerment Center. We are looking to move towards standardization of positions in our counseling department by adding a coordinator of, of special services. We are converting a part-time, a public service librarian to a full-time public service librarian to accommodate even further extension and expansion of our hours and service to students on campus. And finally, we are requesting an assistant for myself, so that... Save the best for last? No. No. Seriously, in order to, in order to keep up with, and to promote that, that kind of life and energy and identity for the campus that we are focused on this year, I will need some additional help so that we can reach out further to the community at large and bring more activities and events from the community onto our campus. That brings me to the end of my presentation. Any questions? Thank you.
Are we near signing a contract yet? What, what is the status of that?
Well, we, we are currently working, working on the MOU. I've been encouraged by our friends at TEA to submit a copy of that so that they can advise us on how we're doing with it. So that when we submit an application, we don't face rejection. So we're in the MOU stage of that, developing that MOU.
What will, it's going to be in the budget, but give me a little more information on the construction of the South, of the Energy Center. What phase are we into? I, I missed a meeting, so you may have talked about this before.
Right. Well, as I said, we're moving into the construction phase of that project and expect that this fall, we will be breaking ground for, for that facility. The plan is to have it completed by the spring of...
So this is the entire facility?
Yes. The entire Energy Technology Center facility, yes.
And that's in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ms. Appleman, board members, Chancellor Hadley, I too wanted to just take the opportunity to thank all of you for all that you've done for the Northeast Campus. All of your support is, is really much appreciated. I want to focus on about five goals. And the first one is 3.7, which is to develop increased opportunities for collaboration and service to the community. As you know, we have expanded our offerings at the Halton Center and we want to continue to work on that and offer more continuing ed and credit classes. Our GED courses are really going through the roof there. And the same is true now at the Richland Hills Center that we just took over this year. And we are also offering GEE classes at the Grapevine Center. We want to establish a transfer academy. And this is something that our student services have proposed this year to, to begin in the following year. We have a small grant from a, an agency called College Fish and this is to pay for incidentals. We have our Phi Theta Kappa students also working on the, the completion process where students will commit to complete, and that is to complete the courses so that they can In order to free up a little bit more time for some of my community work, I too am asking for an assistant to the president. Goal 1.5 is to strengthen and standardize the developmental education program. We will be working with a, an agency called MDRC, which is a, a group that has applied for a grant using TCC Northeast Campus as one of the colleges that they want to work with. And so we'll be working in developmental math on a study grant to see how effective some of our accelerated programs are. We will be renovating some of our classrooms so that we will have a nice math emporium like we have now on the South Campus and on the Northwest Campus. Goal 3.6 has to do with assessing and improving administrative and educational support services and then implementing them. We have a new microbiology lab. This was space freed up when we moved some of our allied health programs. And we are in the process of equipping that and we'll be offering courses in that beginning this fall. We will also, we've requested an instructional associate to help us, actually one and a half instructional associates because we have another biology lab that we're opening. And we want to equip our emergency medical services program with ultrasound capability. 3.2 has to do with developing and implementing strategic real estate and facilities master plan. As many of you know, about, almost a year ago, one of our buildings burned, our instructional media building. It is being renovated and they hope to finish that in November. So if everything goes well, we might be able to offer some classes again in there this spring. And we're going to expand the number of classes that we offer, so we're asking for an additional instructional associate in that area. 2.2 is to expand access to education and training through alternative learning opportunities. All of the campuses have been working on supplemental instruction this past year and it has been very, very successful. And we want to continue to increase that opportunity for students. As, as Dr. Jordan mentioned, we hire students to meet an extra class time for these classes and produce more success in the classroom. We're also collaborating with the Grapevine Colleyville ISD on the possibility of an early college high school there. In fact, their board is meeting tonight on a preliminary basis to, to talk about this. And we want to offer more research-based flipping our classrooms so that students have greater success. When we, when we teach class now, many times the faculty member give the information in the class and then they tell them to go home and work all the odd problems, which is at a higher level. We want to flip that, have them go home, learn the information or read the information and then come to class and, and, and work the problems. So we want to do more of that. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? And I'd like to ask...
Oh.
I was going to say, I should have said it earlier, Dr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, Mrs. Hadley, Mrs. Appleman and board members. It is a pleasure to be here. And I, I would like to start the conversation by mentioning that about six years ago, our faculty and staff accepted responsibility as a team for student success. So everyone on Northwest Campus understands, whatever that person's job may be, that that job is critical for the success of our students. As a result of that, in the previous board workshops, you noted that the Northwest Campus enrollments increased by 35.5% in five years. And the completion rate for our students was equally impressive. And it's because all of the faculty, all of the staff have worked very hard to make that happen. And it speaks to the completion agenda that my colleagues were talking about earlier today. So connected with that, we currently have a study being conducted through the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to look at what it takes for the completion agenda to become a reality. And so it should be interesting to see what happens. But connected with that obviously is providing the support for our faculty as they identify student learning outcomes and for the courses and for the program levels. And they look at what are, what are they doing to move the needle so effectively? So the first thing I would want is support for the faculty. And that is linked to implement, implementing a systematic process to assess and improve academic student learning outcomes. The next one, is there a next one? Expand access to education and training through alternative learning opportunities. We have amazing partnerships with business and industry and with the independent school districts in our service area. We serve approximately eight different independent school districts. And as a result of that, we, we've been able to do quite a bit. Next year, we will be serving 280 students in early college high school. And even though we just started three years ago, we actually will have, at the end of this year, students graduating with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. And that's because they're going to summer school and they're taking additional courses. They just absolutely are doing an incredible job. We will continue supporting our dual enrollment efforts, particularly in the technical programs because that's still an infancy stage. And we will implement three new programs, the pilot training, composites and logistics. And of course, the efforts of Dr. Ellis and the deans and the faculty, those efforts were enormous and more than, more than you would know. But we recognize clearly that without the support of Mrs. Hadley, without the support of the board, we would not be successful. And so we've been approved to offer those programs and we're moving forward with that. In support of those programs, we are, we are getting, we are requesting some staff positions. We are requesting instructional associates for our Science Learning Center. We have not had instructional associates and the standardization suggests that it would be a good idea, so we've requested that. And then we're also requesting support staff in the student development, in the testing center and the student services. And like my brilliant colleagues, I will be requesting an individual to support my efforts as well. I'm leaving my photos behind so my family can recognize me. And, and then the, the last one, which is the most exciting, is to develop and implement a strategic facilities plan for the Alliance, the Northwest Campus Alliance Learning Center. And, you know, I'm still excited, when the board approved that, I almost cried. I was, I just couldn't believe it. I was so moved by that. But we will be working diligently on, on that piece. Facilities, they're already thinking about next steps and I appreciate that. Facilities and Tim Marshall's folks in, in IT, because clearly they will be impacted by that. And then I also have people camping out right outside of the building that will be emptied as soon as folks move to Alliance, but probably that will be the early college high school. I have tremendous demand for that. We have a waiting list with Fort Worth ISD. And I talked to the superintendent for Eagle Mountain Saginaw this morning and they're moving in the direction of also wanting to partner with us for an early college high school. So like my colleagues, I greatly appreciate your support. And I have an excellent team on Northwest, but we wouldn't do much without your support, so thank you.
Tell me a little more about, ensure spaces available for the early college high school on the campus, because I've been out there a couple of times and you're busting at the seams.
We are.
And I want to make, I want to make sure that we have space out there for the, it's also, I think the enrollment's going to be increasing, is it not?
Yes. So there, there are lots of variables. As, as the students get older, as they reach the junior and senior year, they will be immersed in some of the traditional classes with the college students. And there, we do some of that already. But it is true that, that we will be limited in the number of students we can accept until we have more space. In addition to the modular buildings that we have right now, when the Transportation and Logistics Division moves to Alliance, that building, which is right next to the modular buildings, will, will be transformed into a space for the early college high school. And facilities will have to be really creative, but we think we can, we can make it work.
We do have a new committee called the, what is it called? Implementation Committee that probably, that's part of its mission is to study these kinds of things.
We will be happy to participate. Thank you. Now it's my colleagues, Dr. Kapole's turn. Yes. We, they should never let the two of us sit together because we can't sit still.
As my colleagues have said, I also want to thank you on behalf of all the presidents and the council for your foresight in last year's budget and, and making sure that students really succeeded within our colleges. The numbers that Ms. Hadley showed at the last board meeting of student success was completely contributed to the input that you had into our colleges this, in this last year. On the Southeast Campus, we're not only seeing a great increase in students on campus, but they're staying on campus because of the sticky spaces and a lot of the wonderful changes that have happened. At the Southeast Campus, there are going to be three areas that I'm going to be talking about. The implementation of the systematic process for the, for the, to assess and improve academic student learning outcomes. Our emporium, we'll be putting the emporium together this year in the budget. We have expanded the emporium offerings and we're going to be moving that into our integrated reading and writing as well as our developmental reading and writing classes also as a mode of, of delivering education. We also want to continue to expand the sticky spaces and the furniture within our library. Our library is the heart of our campus. It's right in the middle, it is where all the students go while they're waiting for class and also is used for study. This last year, thanks to you, we put a small room in there that was a group study room, but it wasn't just a group study room. Every wall was writable. And you know students write on walls, well, my son's writing on walls anyway. But every room was, was writable. And that, from the minute, we didn't put in sign up or anything, but that room was full all the time with students. So we're trying to, to increase that within the library. We also want to increase, we have large furniture and we want to go to smaller furniture so we can double the size, the number of computers. And with that, we're asking in the budget for a part-time person to be a computer expert as well as a researcher in the library to work with those students, because the students use that as their, as their open lab. Well, you know how excited I am about the early college high school. If you approve this on Monday, we are really ready to move forward. And nobody's more excited than Dr. Calazos. And nobody's more excited than Dr. Cavazos. He and I have met and quite often, we have a large committee that met this week for the last time for this semester. Our MOU is complete. And we've also had a member of TEA in every single meeting that we have had. And they are just so excited, because they don't see many partnerships like this around the country and such input from the IHG partner. Many times IHG partner comes in at the end. And also the success of Marine Creek School is really a model. And since we already set the standard here at Tarrant County, they're just, they can't wait for us to get ours off the ground and going. On Monday, Dr. Cavazos did a state of the district address, which was a packed room, and it was about an hour, hour and twenty minutes. And the one thing, the only thing that was in the article in the paper was the early college high school the next day and the most questions. So we know that we are going to change our community, not just change the students within them, but change the culture. In addition to that, in working with Arlington ISD, at Six Hundred New York, Six Hundred New York is at Six Hundred New York, is this building that was taken over by AISD. And this year, they opened it up, they had to renovate it. And it's really a credit recovery. It's for people where life got in the way and they needed one or two classes just to finish. It has daycare on there and it has counseling services. We are going to work with them just to kind of help those students make a transition to college. And we'll be having some people on site on occasion, just like we do at all of our high schools on there. But it's really to make that transformational change of those students. And that's something that we're, that's part of our mission and we're really excited about. That goes right back to access, which is one of our goals. And something else that we're moving into, we're moving into fourteen technical dual credit offerings with AISD and also with Mansfield ISD. And it's not just the technical offerings that we offer at Culinary, but the partnership here is the Home Host Program that we talked about about six months ago. Many of the programs, the Fire Science Program that's at Northwest, Dr. Jordan has opened up his facilities for the technical dual credit programs, where the students are actually bused over to the facility and they'll be starting that this fall. And we'll be getting into healthcare next. So we're using the Southeast Campus kind of as a portal, as the sister campuses have the programs to offer, because we are one college. The STEM Engineering Academy, we have met with UTA, Mansfield, and AISD. There's a new dean over the engineering program, who is very receptive for us to have our engineering programs, since we are part of a consortium in the state, to transfer into the mechanical and the chemical engineering program at Arlington, at UTA. Mansfield ISD, this year, Dr. Cavazos has started a new program, mandatory for all. Eighth grade is on career and technology pathways that they will have to take. So we can kind of start those students early and hopefully get them in as early as the seventh grade, because we can't wait until eleventh grade or junior year to decide what you want to do. Mansfield ISD, that just announced its new superintendent and Dr. Vian, I'm not going to attempt to pronounce his last name, so Dr. Vian and I have met and we're going to try to move that program also. The development and implementation of strategic real estate, that's always fun at the Southeast Campus. We are really creative and inventive with what we do. With the Architect and Construction Labs programs moving to the South Campus, that has given us about three thousand square feet to play with. This year, we'll be moving our engineering program in there while Ms. Petty and her team decide what to do with that space, whether it be a math emporium or as we look at the plans in the future for Southeast. And then our second floor of ESED, one of the things I learned after sixteen years at Southeast, you just move a whole lot of walls around. And they've been moved around for years. You know, you kind of see where the ceilings are. So what we really have to do up there is just gut it and look at that floor plan, look at the footprint, and see how best we can use that space. The most important thing is to expand our disability services area on that second floor. And I'll be asking for one full-time person to ground out the standardization and disability services. I seem to have a lot of time on my hands, so I'm not asking for an administrative assistant at my campus, but I have one. I'm just, I don't have a lot of time. I am fortunate, as many of you know, Mr. Sinaddos on my campus, I'm very fortunate to have him on my campus. Dr. Carey did a very good job and I was lucky to step into such a great situation. But with that, I had three minutes and I probably went over, Nancy. Do you have any questions? I can stay up here longer if you like, you know, I like that. No, well, thank you very much. And now, Dr. Fulkerson.
Good evening, Chancellor, Mrs. Appleman, members of the board. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight and share with you some of the ideas that we have for making things better for our students and for our community. Bill Kapola said earlier this afternoon, the presidents could probably just stand up and say ditto, 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 because what is happening on one campus is happening on some of the others as well. But I wanted to share with you some of the things that we are talking about at Trinity. First of all, we are very interested in strengthening and standardizing the developmental education program. Everyone in the district is working on that. And so we are really honing in on success initiatives, of course, achieving the dream, but also faculty advising. That's one of the best things that has happened at Tarrant County College, when our faculty get forty hours of training to learn how to advise students. And we have GED testing at our campus and at another campus, and then we are excited about supplemental instruction. We have an increase requested in the budget to support the students who can become the tutors in some of these programs. We have initiated just recently what the other campuses already have, and that's an academic foundations department. We have put ours with an academic program so that the teachers who are working with the developmental students will have the stimulation and the opportunity to share with those who are teaching the undergraduate courses at the same time. We think there's some value in those interdisciplinary conversations. And then we are experimenting on our campus with accelerated, the student development course is accelerated. All of the literature that we read, everyone hears, that if you want students to succeed, get them out of developmental studies as quickly as you can. And so we started with an eight-week course and have cut it down to four weeks and then to two weeks, and now a weekend. And the students are staying in the weekend course with great success. And we are tracking them in their future courses to see if they have gotten all that they need in that short concentrated time. We believe that that will be the case for them. One of the other vision, 2015 items that I'm excited about is expanding access to education and training through alternative learning opportunities. As you know, we have a dual-credit early college high school with Fort Worth ISD, the University of North Texas, and the University of North Texas Health Science Center. It's called the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences. And we are talking about informally, trying to provide some college mentors for the TAB's dual-credit kids, maybe some faculty, maybe some students, so that they can, while they're on our campus and while we can get some people over there, they will have opportunities to talk to people about the professions that they want to enter. We also have the medical dual-credit academies. Dr. Kapola mentioned that, that students from Mansfield are being bused to our campus to take dual-credit. And we are excited for that opportunity. I love the collaboration between the campuses. It's really exciting to work with my colleagues. We are going to develop some CE programs for the community of Castleberry. Castleberry has a new learning center, a renovated elementary school building. And we have worked to provide developmental courses, general GED courses, and some workforce training there. And we are able to use that building for just a dollar a year, and it's a great facility. To, the next one there is developing increased opportunities for collaboration and service to the community. And this is why I'm so glad that I'm going to get an assistant also, because there's absolutely no way that the presidents can do all these things that they want to do, be in the public schools as much as we have to be and want to be, and work with institutions and agencies in the community, because you want to be walking the halls. You want to be visiting classes. And having more help in our office will allow us to do all of it better, we hope. So we thank that possibility and we hope that you can support it. We are going to continue to develop and improve our summer STEM medical bridge programs. We had six of those this summer. We started with some fifth graders going into sixth grade at Castleberry. We had a school at Butler Housing. And then we had two STEM programs connected to TABs. And these students love coming into our buildings. They love seeing the facilities that you've allowed us to have. And we believe that this is really an important way for us to serve the community. Because all of these students are so interested in the medical professions, we are asking for a learning lab manager for the sciences. In addition, three or four years ago, when Vision Fest was offered first at our campus, we were astonished when two-thousand-plus people came and brought children who needed to have their eyes checked, and hundreds of them got free glasses as a result. Mrs. Hadley was there and she was so excited that she said, "Well, if it's true that having glasses helps elementary school students, what if we have some developmental students who need glasses and maybe have not been able to see, and that might explain the situation that they're in?" She challenged the partners, including Alcon, to work with us, and we are going to start our Vision USA this fall with our developmental students. And it will provide eye care for uninsured students. And we know we have plenty of those. And so thank you for that good idea and for that challenge. We didn't know if we'd make that happen and we probably wouldn't have if you hadn't done it for us. And then we want to maintain exposure to the services that TCC offers by providing and supporting opportunities for community use of facilities. And for that, we are asking for the conversion of a half-time position to a full-time position. Our idea store is becoming a very popular place. All of our student tours start there. Every time anyone wants to come to the campus, they start there because of the wonderful location of it. So we needed a bit more help and I hope that you can support that position for us. Do you have any questions I can answer? Yes, ma'am. I did, and I didn't realize that I hadn't said that. Thank you so much. There's been such a move in the state of Texas. Students need to have a bachelor's degree and they need to get it for ten thousand dollars. There's also a hue and cry, we must have more nurses. Brian Stewart worked with our dean and with the officials at Tarleton State University. And as part of our articulation agreement with them, Tarleton is offering the junior year of the Tarleton's nursing program to our students at TREC. Our students then become concurrently enrolled. We had fifteen of our students in that first offering. We have almost twenty now. And we are hoping that we can market that to the many associate nurses in the community, because all of them will be asked to have the bachelor's degree within a few years. And Tarleton has been a great partner. They come to see us, they help us recruit students, and I appreciate your letting me explain that one, because I didn't realize I had walked over it. That's exactly right. The ADN nurses then could get a bachelor's degree in nursing. Anything else? Thank you very much. Carlos Morales, Dr. Morales is the president of TCC Connect, and he's next, and he's wonderful.
Good evening, Ms. Appleman, Chancellor Hadley, and members of the board. I'm going to be talking about a couple objectives here, and one of them is to, two-point two, expand access to education and training through alternative learning opportunities. And the strategies that we are aiming to complete are in regards to developing the administrative unit and administrative unit for TCC Connect, also to develop the first fully online program, as well as to standardize online course design. And another of those initiatives is to develop Weekend College centralized at Trinity River. Another objective that we have identified is one-point-three in regards to reviewing and improving current student services and processes. And the strategies that we aim at implementing have to do with expanding dual credit to reach each high school in the county, also to standardize dual-credit operations academically and administratively as well. We also aim at revise student services for online learning, Weekend College, and dual credit, which are the three areas of responsibility for TCC Connect. And the third initiative that we are looking at, develop and contribute more, is to develop and implement a process improvement program across the organization. One of those initiatives or strategies is related to implement a two-year revision process for online courses. We are infusing more quality in that area. And also to expand credit for prior learning experience through the district. So those are some of the objectives and initiatives and strategies that we are aiming at doing during this year. Any questions? Thank you. And next is by Chancellor Wells.
Thank you, Carlos. I think if we stopped right there and just said, "Everyone else is here to help take care of what happens on the campuses," it's a done deal. I mean, I'm proud of everything that I've heard so far. I was proud of all of that this afternoon when we talked about all of these different things. You guys do a good job. Super job. I really appreciate it. The task for the Office of, yes. The task for, and if you think of those guys as a clock face, you know, we're going to move the clock face and step back a little bit and see what's behind all of that, because the function, and I'll talk about Academic Affairs and then the other guys will talk about what they're doing to help support what happens out there on the campuses with the students and the faculty. But the function of Academic Affairs basically is to help provide support for the instructional leadership on the campuses. And that means whenever you see a schedule, somebody somewhere had to plug that schedule into Tim's computer and make sure all of the bits and parts and pieces work together. And there's a lot of the folks on the campuses that work on that, but that all gets checked by folks in Academic Affairs. When we talk about articulation agreements with different colleges and schools across the state and throughout the United States, someone in the Academic Affairs works on that. When you see a catalog, someone in Academic Affairs has helped put that together. So there's a lot of pieces behind the scene that has to go on. And what you will see when you look up here from Vision 2015 and you think about the different strategies that we have that help implement Vision 2015, there are about three of them I'll talk about today, but the simple fact of the matter is, there's not a one of us here in this room talking to you tonight that's not connected in some way to every one of these strategies. You've heard a conversation tonight about the development of the institutional plan, the facilities plan, the real estate plan, the academic master plan. All of those things, as you know, have come together into a system that we call the institutional plan. Now, the piece that I will be working on during this coming year is to make sure that there is a strong connection between the Office of Academic Affairs and everything that moves through that decision-making and prioritization model, that's the institutional plan. We'll help provide support for people who bring ideas through that model. We'll help provide training for them and help bring those concepts and ideas to the board when we ask you to make decisions that emerge from that process. Another part of our operation is the Office of Program Development. And in that part of our system, we'll be taking a look at what are called stackable credentials. You can have a student that goes through a campus program and emerges with a job, with a certificate that testifies to the acquisition of job-ready skills, that they can go out and get a job, and when they have finished the eighteen hours, do that and then come back and take another eighteen-hour course. They get another certificate that stacks on that one, until eventually, we've built a program that allows that student to graduate with an associate degree or graduate with an associate of applied science. In terms of the developmental education program across the district, one of the projects that we that we've taken on and will continue is to help enhance the faculty skills in working with students in adult basic education, the boot camp, the GED programs that we have, to help strengthen the wraparound services that we have for all of the developmental education students that we have. And a particular challenge that we have this coming year are new regulations that require us to exempt students from having to take developmental education and place them into gateway classes. We have to be able to work as a team to provide wraparound services for all of those students. So, that's part of what we'll be doing through Academic Affairs as a part of our job task for this coming year. Another piece that we'll work on is to support the transition of responsibilities from campus operations for dual credit and weekend college and distance learning over to TCC Connect under the leadership of Dr. Morales. That change at the institution creates tremors across a lot of the operations that we have had in place for a long time. And so, accommodating that change is a big part of our responsibilities going forward. And in discussions with the campus presidents and Carlos yesterday, as we talked about how we were going to go about doing a lot of that work, caused me to add this bullet at the bottom of the page, which is to take a look at redesigning the Academic Affairs operations of the district to improve services to the campus and to respond to system challenges that we have at the college. We will also, as a part of our work this coming year, become a serviceman's opportunity college and a member of the college credit for Heroes Network, which are both initiatives in the state and nationally that allow us to provide increased levels of academic credit for servicemen and women who have completed training in those environments. Another piece of Carlos's work is an association with the Council for Adult and Experiential Learning, in which students will be able to bring work experiences to the college in a portfolio format. We evaluate those and provide credit for experience for the work that they've done. And so, that causes some change in the way that we operate our system, and we try to make that more efficient. Finally, a piece of work that we are constantly doing is working with the corporate training folks to provide additional services throughout the county for corporate training and for workforce education for the at-risk students. Do you have any questions? Thank you. I would ask Joy to come up and talk about how she's going to wrap her services around all of us.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Chancellor Hadley, Mrs. Appleman, and board members, as my colleagues have said, it's always a pleasure to come before you this time of year and talk about what we propose to do with the requests that we are making in this year's budget. Like my colleagues, in the student success area, everything is connected. The work that we're doing here at the district is very much connected to the work that's happening on the campus, and you'll certainly see that as we go through these requests. Our first area of focus is looking at supporting student learning and success, and we propose to do that in a number of ways. Financial aid outsourcing. This is something that came before you and was approved in the June budget. Thank you so much for that. Outsourcing, our verifications, and our call center and financial aid helps us in a number of ways. First of all, it will expedite, we believe, the processing of financial aid paperwork. It will also create additional access to personnel so that people can get their financial aid questions asked. And in addition to that, we will be able to increase the face-to-face staff that are going to be available on the campuses to interact with students, to present on financial literacy, to help students to make good decisions about their financial aid. We are also proposing to create greater support, a consistent plan for support, rather, for near completers on our campuses. You recall, last year, I came to you and I asked for a graduation outreach specialist, and that individual's charge was to identify those students who had already completed degrees and certificates and award those. Well, we've certainly been doing that, and we've already shared with you the increases that we've seen as a result of that. But in addition to that, that individual's job is also to identify those students who are near completion, 12 hours or more or less near achieving their goal. And we're creating a consistent plan where each campus will be able to work with those students to help and coach them to achieve their degree. We're also looking, as you all know, to hire additional advisors. These additional advisors are going to assist us in a number of ways. First of all, it's going to take some of the pressure off of our campuses so that they will be able to, again, sit down and do more face-to-face advising with our students. These advisors will also be able to support online and face-to-face students, do new student group advising, which is required for every first-time-in-college student before they register, to help them in conducting the -- or in completing the pre-assessment activity, which is, again, part of the new requirements coming out of the coordinating board this year. And again, working with the campuses to advise those near-completers students as well. We also propose to explore success or life coaches. These are individuals, can be anyone on our campuses. We look to train them to be able to kind of be there for students and mentor them and coach them along so that they stay on track. A number of colleges around the country have instituted these kinds of coaches, and so this is something we're going to look to see if it's appropriate for Terrant as well. We want to continue expanding our Men of Color mentoring program that we started last year. And I will let you know that last year, we had 149 students participating in the Men of Color mentoring program, and there were a total of 62 mentors. So, we want to make sure that we expand it and continue to expand it this coming year. I will give you a bit of data. Of those students who worked very closely with their mentor, 73% of them were successful in their courses, and that success based on an A, B, or C grade, as opposed to those students in that same demographic who were not part of the program, were only 60% successful. So, we are very proud of the work that we're doing, and we're confident that we can continue to take that to another level. We also are looking to scale up our Scholastic Student Success Summit. And I have to give credit where it's due to our South Campus. This is something that they piloted this year, and it was very successful. So, we are hoping to scale that up at each of our campuses. What this involves is, it's an opportunity for deans and department chairs to become more familiar with the data on their courses, and then to really sit down and share that data with the faculty in their divisions. And this is also an opportunity for staff and for students to be involved as well. So, we hope this fall for every campus to scale up and have a Scholastic Student Success Summit. And then, in the spring, we propose to have a district-wide student scholastic summit here as well. On the South Campus, we also plan to pilot a new mentoring program called Empowering Links. This is a mentoring program -- well, let me say this, certainly all of our programs are open to all students, but this particular program really targets the women on the South Campus to help them to establish career and personal goals, and then develop a plan for achieving those goals as well. Next slide. To ensure affordability, accessibility, and diversity that's reflective of our community, we propose to expand our community and high school showcase. You will recall that in April of this year, we had our first college-wide open house, where over 1,300 people attended. And so, we want to continue to build on that and increase the attendance and the exposure to all of our campuses. We want to continue to collaborate and communicate with our high schools and districts about the changes that Dr. Wells alluded to that are coming from the coordinating board. And we want to collaborate with our campus and district personnel to ensure that we are providing consistent services to our high school students. The last area, promoting institutional effectiveness. We propose to certainly continue the work that we've begun in terms of program review, and that's looking at all of our support services, looking at the action plans that have been developed in the last year and a half, and helping those support areas to continue to improve. We also want to continue to work with process improvement to increase efficiency and effectiveness. One of the things that we did this year, working with process improvement, was to create a preregistration committee, and a number of really great recommendations came out of that committee that we've already begun to implement. So, we're looking to continue those kinds of efforts. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions for me? All right. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Marshall.
President Appleman, chancellor, board members, I want to thank you personally for allowing me to participate in this wonderful organization. Technology for technology's sake is never fun. When it has a purpose, and particularly furthering somebody's hopes and dreams, it makes it exciting. So, the opportunity to continue to work on what the KELT brings to me, that's the majority of what I do. So, I have a number of bullets here, but the majority of what my staff does is to support all those things that we've already talked about tonight. Each one of them has a technology component that either requires new technology or changes in how we currently do things, and, you know, we get a lot of input from faculty and staff about, again, something different, but that's the way the world is. It's always something different. Plus, I get to dance. So, we'll start with 1.3, review and improve current student service processes. These bullets are all where the projects are primarily technology-driven, some of the ones that are set aside from those that support the rest of the KELT. The first one is expansion of our academic learning and academic planning systems. You've heard a lot of talk about the introduction of new and increased student services. There are a number of systems that we're engaging to continue that support for those groups. Probably the one that excites me the most is the 24-by-7 student, faculty, and staff technology support hotline. That will really change how the students get an impression of how we are ready to serve them in a format that's available all day, every day, even on Christmas morning if they want to log in and take advantage of doing some work in preparation for, you know, something that happens after Christmas morning. 3.1, update and execute the technology plan based on the district strategic plan. There's a mandate from the state with regards to how we staff our security environment. The Director of Information Security is a position that I'm proposing for the district, and one of the first things they'll do is establish a disaster recovery site. Right now, we have a really good data center built for a corporation, but we take advantage of it. However, you never just stand on a single data center. You always should have a disaster recovery center, and we're in the process of putting one together, but we need a security specialist to help us put the finishing touches on that. We also want to upgrade instructional technology in 50 district classrooms. We have a very successful recycle program for our network and for our desktop support. What we don't have is a similar program for our classrooms, and more and more of the faculty are taking advantage of technology in the classrooms. We have standards, but some of those equipment installations are over 10 years old, and we want to be able to apply the same recycling effort and model to the classrooms. 1.1, implement a systematic process to assess and approve academic student learning outcomes. During our visit with ATD, the coaches remarked on that we had a very good model for institutional research, how we went from six staff last year to 21 staff in this past current fiscal year, thanks to your help with last year's budget. But what they do is being changed. In the past year, we've supplied data to the ATD cohorts. What they're asking us to do is start doing some interpretation and some analysis of that data, and there's a position that we're asking to add a coordinator of student success research to do the next step with regards to research, and that's providing recommendations because we're gathering a lot of data on the ATD interventions. And the neat thing about those interventions is, those interventions cause our staff to ask questions that the ATD is not even asking. And again, once you have the data for one, they tend to want the data for the other, and it becomes a welcome backlog of requests, but we need to be a little bit quicker on how we supply the data and also supply recommendations with regards to that activity. And then, the last piece is, we talk a lot about the Vision 2015, and what I guess the gorilla in the room is, that's pretty soon. So, the Innovation Forum is a process for prioritizing projects, but it's also the seed process for defining our next vision. It's where all the good ideas will come about. And if you talk to somebody that's been through strategic planning, they hate it because it's typically a one-time process, it's very intense, and then everybody goes away for five years until you do your next one. The Innovation Forum has a specific technology, has a specific application that we can build. It will be the first in higher education. I've been around the country. We're getting ready to embark on something that a lot of institutions do not do, and that's continual process improvement and continual innovation of what's happening in education. And this will help us continue being a leader and a vanguard in this respect. And I'm excited about that type of technology because it will help us become better. It will help us become better for our students, but also become better for them and those that follow, because it's not just Vision 2015, it's Vision 2020, Vision 2025, and it continues, and we have to have a process that will support that. So, any questions? Thank you. And Mark's next.
Okay. Finance. All right. 2.4. We talked about doing -- we implemented Phase 1 of the Common Course. We did 10 Common Texts, and now we're beginning Phase 2, which is to do implementation of all the different courses. We're going to go to the Common Texts. 3.3, we're going to -- we implemented the print and copier with the technology group to reduce our cost-wide savings on that. We implemented, with your approval, we have now an e-procurement software that will give us a greater vision and to look not only in large expenditures but in small expenditures. We also will be revising our current JOK system to bring us greater efficiency and cost, and we are also looking to continue reducing our costs in food services. This is one we did with Subway by having less costs in equipment and increasing our revenue. All right. And 3.7, we are pursuing public and private partnerships, and we continue to review domestic and international revenue opportunities. Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Good evening. As everybody knows here, Dr. Mushala and Dr. Coronado have done an excellent job with the Professional Development Program, but we're continuing to enhance both the structure and the curriculum as we get more information about what needs to be done. Under the five-year diversity strategic plan, we have a plan that we're going to roll out to the KELT on August 27th, so this is going to be the year of implementation of that plan. Under the systematic processes, this, in my world, is about providing legal counsel to support both the administrative and the educational services here, and that's a big piece of what I do every day. Under the emergency management plan, this year has been spent -- this involves both the police department and our emergency management team. This year has been spent on training, tabletop exercises, but then, this coming-up year, we're going to the full-scale exercises on every campus, which will be a giant effort of getting in local police and fire departments, EMS, SWAT teams. So, we're going to spend a lot of time actually doing those exercises. And then, on the last goal, we have to create a central adjunct repository so that all the campuses can go to one central area through Dr. Coronado and draw from those resources. The contracts, in a 12-month period, I had 330 contracts running through me. That does not include real estate. Real estate gets coded differently, and I'm only spending 13% of my time on it. That's a problem, because you have high-risk contracts like HireOne and EdFinancial, which deal with financial aid. They need a lot of attention and a lot of follow-up to see if the contract should be continued the next year, and that's something I need a lawyer, another lawyer, to help me with. Every agreement that you've heard, dual credit, articulation agreements, they all run through my office, so you can see why I'm going to be requesting another lawyer this year. Is there any questions? Thank you.
That's okay, Angela. That's okay. Don't worry about it. Talk to you about that later. Good evening to the trustees, as well as the chancellor. I'll be brief as well, and we each, I'm certain, could have started our comments with what you see is not exhaustive, and how we got to this point was not all smiles, but we are here tonight, and we appreciate the support that you all continue to provide us. Just three areas. One, develop and implement a process improvement program across the district. So, this, you've heard several folk talk about process improvement. This is a district-wide initiative. So, this is how we transform TCC, through process improvement. So, through this area, we've taken on the ambitious task of training every TCC employee in what is considered lean fundamentals. We are about one-fourth of the way on that task. It'll be roughly over 2,500 or so folk that will train, so we've done about 541 at this point. This is a two-person department, so we're very methodical about how we move through this, but I think everyone that is exposed to this training comes away very differently in how they think about their jobs, what they're to execute, and how it all fits into the larger plan of TCC. So, one of the other things we've done, we've started to measure the Vision 2015 effort by providing updates and making it more of an interactive document so that at any point you could look and know where you are. We use the red, yellow, green connotation, so you know if you're red, you're red. So, if you're green, you're green, and we look at those and decide where we need to put resources. So, that's been a very helpful tool for us. The revision and execution of the marketing plan, this is the fun stuff. So, Suzanne is a recent member to the team, but you remember TCC and me. That was the first launch of what ultimately would be our branding campaign. We're doing various things. Tagline development is currently being done, but this is where we have a lot of fun. We've asked for a slight increase by way of advertising budget because we're going to look at a media plan. We have a strategy wheel that will walk us through some very specific things that we want to accomplish, so we appreciate your support on that. Then, the Intranet. We've done another phase of the Intranet. We're driving more information to the Intranet so that the Internet website is more of a public place for folk who are prospect students of the institution or the general public. But we, obviously, when we did the communications audit, we learned that we had a great deal of information on the website that didn't need to be on the website. It needed to be on an internal communication outlet, so we did that. That's been one huge step for us. The Graphics Identity Standards Manual, we have to now move to, and this is the part that some folk won't like, we have to move towards the enforcement of uniformity, and that's not always done by committee. We want the image for TCC to be unique yet across the board, so this is one of the ways that we'll get there. Our social media team, we're finding that communicating with our students, the access through social media just tends to be so much better for us, obviously, it's faster, and we get feedback from the students in a very different way, so we think that tool will be great for us. Then, the increased funding opportunities. Here is another area that we're trying to bolster. We've asked our grants, development, and compliance area to take on more of a district-wide focus so that we don't have a lot of, for lack of a better term, shootoffs of folks seeking grants. We're trying to centralize that process. So, in order to do that, this is the one area that we've asked for additional staff. So, we've asked for an assistant to the assistant to assist the assistant, and then, once we have that person, we'll be able to make a real difference. But we, I think, and I forget the stat, but Jackie shared it with me, we had a huge amount of traffic on grants over this past year up into our current status, and it takes a great deal of work to do the due diligence on these grant opportunities, and when you get them from many different sources, then you still have to do the same amount of due diligence. So, that's where we're going to ask for another staff person, and we're also doing some training, particularly for the project manager types, so that they understand the importance of the compliance as we secure these grants. Any questions? Thanks. Next is Nina Petty.
Good evening. I always say that in real estate, we're the tail, so it's probably appropriate that I'm last, but not least, and the tail is wagging and wagging. We are so excited about this coming year, and these three strategies really consume a lot of our activities, and so I want to walk you through them. 3.2, you've heard a lot this evening from my associates and all on the KELT that we're all using or starting to use the institutional plan to assist us in sound business decisions. We're implementing the plan at this point. We're in the implementation stage, and real estate and facilities is supporting all the activities that surround that. This summer, the academic summer programs were run through the institutional plan, 50 programs that are funded by Carl Perkins Grants, and these 50 programs were all given a Dream Score, and it gave us the opportunity to beta-test how the plan is working, and it exposed about 100 people, faculty and staff, to the plan, so that was very exciting, and we're going to continue supporting the plan as we move forward. We're now in the process of building out all the Innovation Forums, as Tim talked about earlier, putting those all in place, and that is very important to getting this effort going. And then, as you'll hear about in a little bit, all of our budget requests that we've received, and we've received about $100 million worth of requests, much more than we have money for, those will all get run through the institutional plan. So, as you can see, real estate and facilities is a big support mechanism to that. Moving to the process improvement area, this is an area that is very important to us because any way that we can be more efficient with our funds, I always say we like to give it back to the students here at the college. So, we're in the second year of implementing our YARDI software that tracks our costs in our operational area. You might recall last year that due to our ability to better track our costs in the operational area alone, which is, you know, different than our construction cost area, but in the operational area, which is about a $30 million budget, we were able to give back about $2.7 million by being able to just track the funds better, and we're hoping, again, this year, we, of course, won't be able to give back that much, but in the custodial area where we're tracking that, we're hopeful to bring more savings back there. And then, outside of the operational area, back to the construction side, we're also with Tim Marshall's great help in, because in the real estate and facility side, systems are very important to us, so having Tim's support for us, he helped us not only with YARDI and getting that onboard, but also with our new project management software called eBuilder, which is used by a lot of higher education facilities. It helps track our projects on the construction side, so we're very excited about implementing that this year. That is going to be a big effort. We're getting off the Chief tablet and Excel on how we've been managing our projects historically and taking on a much more professional view of it, and that will tie directly to the financial side, which I'm hopeful that that will help us be more efficient there in tracking the projects better. But on the project management side this last year, we have continued to train our in-house team to be more efficient by using our project manager consultants on the outside to really help train those people to really know what costs to look for, and we are projecting to bring back to the district $800,000 in savings this year on our CIP side, so we're excited about that. And we're also putting in place a SharePoint site, which helps us collaborate better on the web to be able to access all our information. We haven't ever had anything like that, and again, thanks to Tim Marshall's group in helping us. 3.7 is all-around collaboration with the community and working better in communicating what we're doing. We're always looking at ways, and of course, the institutional plan, I can't even begin to tell you how much that helps us collaborate as an institution. We are all talking to one another. We don't go forward one without, on any project, without really having much more collaborative approach on everything we do, and that's really exciting. We've also recently instituted a field report that I think some of the board has seen, and it goes to the presidents on any project that's going on. I think that has been a great tool that has pictures, and it goes out on a weekly basis, and it really gives you a snapshot of what's happening on that project under construction, and if any of you board members would like to get on that email list, you're more than welcome to. And then, we're also always trying to focus more on our community efforts and working with the chambers and the MWBE community, and we'll be stepping up our efforts there. So, that concludes my portion. If you don't have any more questions, I'm going to move into walking you through at a high level of all the requests that we've received in the capital improvement program. So, next slide, Shelley.
An ongoing report.
There's field reports that we do, Ms. Appleman, that are, we've just implemented, that we do. So, for instance, if we have a project on the South Campus that's going on, there's a group of people that are on that list to see what's happening on that project on a weekly basis. So, it's a pretty short, concise, tells you where the project is, gives you some little snapshot pictures of under construction, and walks you all the way through the project so that you kind of keep up with, oh, that's where we approved that project, and now I'm seeing you spend the money, and it come to fruition. So, it's been a really good, I think, tool for everybody. Everybody's just really been excited about it, and as we get into the bigger projects, I think those are the ones that you really kind of want to be. It will fill up your email list, and it's, the reports, because of the pictures, are big, and so you have to sort of manage your inbox and not leave them there. It'll blow you up, so, anyway. So, moving along to an overview of our capital improvement requests. These are the requests that we have received throughout the district, and we'll go to the first slide, which each one, so you'll see six slides, one for each of the campus and then a district-wide slide, and they're basically the same. We could not put all of our requests, or we'd be here all night because there was probably 300-plus line items, but we tried to consolidate them into this template. At the top, on the left, what you'll see is the projects that pretty much have been approved by you as the board or part of the institutional plan. So, for instance, at the South Campus, you see the Energy Technology Center is the exciting project that's happening there. We're also going to be doing prototype classrooms, the Innovation Forums, and the sticky spaces there. And then, we have categories, and you can see most, a lot of them are revolving around what we call MEP, which is the Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, and Energy Conservation, Fire Safety, Safety and Security. And then, of course, all the campuses always have a furniture list request. Last year, I think Kirby, we spent $4 million on furniture. Those requests, we continue to try to cull out some of the 1950, '68 furniture that we, '60 furniture that we still have, believe it or not, running around this place. So, that's an ongoing process. And then, there's a number of under 20, we try to categorize the smaller projects that we do in-house under Gary Prather's leadership. He has put a great team together in less than 18 months of in-house people to offset so we don't have to go hire a bunch of consultants outside. We're doing a lot of that work inside, and that was a vision that Chancellor Hadley came, when I came on board, is to build a group of in-house construction folks that can manage those, and those are the smaller projects, and they add up to a lot in the long run, so we get a whole list, laundry list of those, and I just have them under a category. Then, of course, at South, go back, just let me mention, at South, then each one will have a category which will be unique to that campus, the CIP renovation or repair, and I've just kind of picked on the bigger ones that are of importance to the president there at that campus, and you'll see the South. No, we can move ahead. Thanks, Shelley. So, at Northeast, you'll see at the top, we've done the Mathaporiums at South and Northwest, and I, we are so excited about them. We just had tours at both of those campuses, and I can't wait to show y'all. I hope the, I know the computers are in at Northwest, and I hope they're in at South, but we should either arrange a tour. If you have an opportunity, go see them. They're really fun and energetic and cool, and so the other three campuses will be getting their Mathaporiums. So, Northeast is on the list this year, of course, Innovation Forum, Sticky Spaces, and then the same sort of MEP type in Conservation, Energy, and Security. At Northeast, you can see under renovation or repair the things that Dr. Darlage and his team have requested there. So, moving on to the next campus is Northwest, and of course, how exciting, as Dr. LeBlanc said, to have our Alliance Learning Center, and that, of course, we're going to need some funding to do the renovation. We're doing it, as we say, with a bucket of paint. It's got a couple of million-dollar bucket of paint, but in the whole scheme of things, much less than the $80 million that was in the other project. And then, prototype classrooms, Innovation Forums, Sticky Spaces there. The unique thing on this list, of course, is going to be repurposing the aviation space at the Northwest Campus, and they'll be moving out of there next summer, so we'll probably need some funding for some design fees to go into repurposing that space, and as Dr. LeBlanc said, I think she's eyeing it for the early college high school, so that'll be fun. Next slide. Southeast Campus, of course, you heard about our early college high school. We're hoping that that will get approved on Monday, and that will keep that campus buzzing this next year, and we have a very, if that happens, a very tight timeframe. As I say, every drop needs to hit in the bucket to get that open next August, and we're all going to be working in a team-oriented way to make that happen, because I'm not sure we built a building in 12 months ever here, so we're going to need everybody's help. We're going to do it. I know. We are going to do it, absolutely. Mathaporium will go in there, of course, Innovation Forum, Sticky Spaces, all the other things, and then, in addition, Dr. Coppola and his team have requested for some important things under the renovation and repair area. This should probably say Trinity River and Trinity River East Campus because they're combined on this list, and again, the things that went through the institutional plan that we decided we were all going to do, which are the top four, and then, in her, Dr. Fulkerson's area of renovation or repair, she's requested Welcome Center, renovating disability support, and creating the Computer Multipurpose Room in a one-stop-shop. And the next slide is our district-wide of things that my team comes to me and to you now to say, here's things that we really need as a district to do across the district. And of course, all of these things add up to way more money than we have, so the task will be to run all these things through our new institutional plan and prioritize them and bring them to the KELT and our chancellor, and then in turn to you and your institutional planning committee for you to make a decision on how we spend the money and which of these projects we do and we don't do. So, that concludes my section, and I'll turn it back over to the chancellor.
moment. I haven't been here as long as Dr. Morrison, but I have enjoyed about 25 years of these kinds of workshops and presentations, and I will have to say that I sense a new spirit, if you will, of collaboration and cooperation and shared vision, and I commend you and I commend all of you, because I know this has not been easy, despite the dancing and levity that you have mentioned. It's been difficult, and I want to thank all of you, faculty, deans, presidents, vice chancellors, for bringing such a comprehensive report. chancellors, for bringing such a comprehensive report to this board.
Well, thank you, Ms. Appleman. Thank you very much. I actually was about to get happy when I, you know, it looked like I tripped, but I was about to get happy because I am just so very, very pleased with this wonderful team that I have here at Tarrant County College. And you can see that we all do work extremely well together. And even though, as some have said, it hasn't been an easy task perhaps to get to where we are tonight, it's been a very collaborative one. And you don't have to just trust what I say. I've got witnesses over here on the left, the JCC, who have been absolute, absolutely great about hanging in with us for every one of these board meetings, and they got to hear us. And sometimes, we did get a little bit, you know, heated, but we all came back to a good place. And we think it's very good that our faculty has been able to work with us. And I think I've told you before, as we've gone through all of this, they weren't just sitting here looking, they had to actually tell us what they thought about what we were doing as well. So, it has been a very good thing for us. So, team, you did a really wonderful job tonight, and I'm very appreciative. And pretty much all of you said it, you thanked the people who worked for you, but I too know how important those people are who are right there with you. They worked with us all the way through, you know, all of this. We can't, I can't do what I do without my team. They can't do what they do without their teams, and their teams can't do what they do without their teams. And so, it just all goes all the way through the organization. It really does flow from the top down. It flows from the bottom up as well. So, when you see these numbers and you see these requests, I certainly didn't think of all of them. The Celt members didn't think of all of them. The people who report to them didn't think of it. It goes all the way down to the end user. And in many instances, things also come from the students. So, with that, Mrs. Appleman, we'll go to the next phase, but if you want to announce a little break here.
I do. We will. We'll take a five-minute break and come back here for the continuation.
Come right back, and I'll be right ready.
All of these wonderful ideas and best practices systemic. And so what we've seen here earlier today, when I was on Northwest Campus, we saw very well recruited personnel in a specialty area. And what we've seen here today has also been an example of that. So it really makes our job as a member of the Board of Trustees that much easier because we get to see great work from very well-trained, passionate people. And I thought it was important to mention that because it is kind of special.
Thank you, thank you. And a special thanks to our staff members who also make that work. And this gives me an opportunity to say, we have, we think, a very good professional development plan that is available to all of our employees. Dr. Coronado is here tonight and it has been his staff, him leading the program along with his staff, put this in place. And it is institutionalized for us now. It's all online and everybody has an opportunity to go in and say what they want to do. They can choose the courses they need with the help of their supervisors or others to help them prepare for the next level. So we are very pleased about that. Succession planning, if you will. So we're happy about that. This first slide that I'll start with shows where we were on June 25th, where we had a total of $15.8 million worth of requests and 124 FTE new employees. On July 26th, we whittled that down to 5.1 million and 30 and a half employees. And let me tell you that we had a, I guess about an hour and a half or maybe two-hour conference call with all the Kelp members after one of our meetings when we had that 124 new employees that everybody was looking at what we needed to do. And we had talked long and hard about what we wanted to do and we got together and said, how can we restructure our thinking about this budget to get to where we want to go with it? And I'll tell you a bit more about that later. The next slide will show you the maintenance and operation proposed revenue summary for 2013-14. And of course, on the left, you have what it looked like for 2012-13. And we have gone through all of these slides several times before, so it won't take a lot of time. Stop me anytime you want. But if you look at the right-hand side on the increase, and that's the main thing I think you should focus on right now, we got 2.6 million new dollars from state appropriation, 3.2 from the maintenance tax, as well as we go down to line tax revenue for, that's not the one I'm looking for. Where is the line, Nancy? Where we get the other money? Debt service, $724,000 there. So that was the total tax increase. Expecting a $2.4 million increase in credit hour tuition, $200,000 in indirect costs and other, and the total education in general, $8.5 million with 5.4 for tax revenue for renewal and replacements, making that a total of $13.9 million total educational, general, and capital improvement projects. And when you have the debt service there, you're looking at $14.69 million of new money. The next slide will show you the proposed budget summary. Maintenance and operation increasing by $8.5 million. Auxiliary expenditure is decreasing by $390,000. Renewal and replacement, $18.1 million. But that really isn't a real decrease. What that is just shows that the facilities team has done a significantly more robust job of spending more money this time. So the budget, the carryover is not as much this year as it was last year. And then, of course, on the debt service, $724,000 increase and the building fund expenditure of $20 million, which will include the early college, high school, no, no, no. The energy technologies center is in that, and alliance, the $3 million payment that we must make. We paid $3 million a few weeks ago and we'll pay another million in September 1, I believe is when that's due. So that's basically what that is. For a total increase in that budget of $10.6 million. The next slide is the budget summary history. And that's too small to read. It's on your computer screens if you'd like to look at it there. Shelley can make it a little bit bigger. Mrs. Vandegrift, I believe you wanted to look at the budget summary history. Is that the one? That's the one that you wanted to look at to see how our budgets had gone over the years. So we show you there budget year 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. And I can't read the left-hand side, Shelley. The left, go the other direction. So you can see the total operation and maintenance. And some of this was covered, if you remember, in Mark McClenda's report. He did it in a different way, but it showed you, I think he called it the stability of the budget. What did you call it, Mark? Predictability, the extent of predictability of the budget. And you can see that that goes pretty long of what he was saying. That total operation and maintenance. Go down to the expenditure piece, Shelley. That's what I'm looking for there. One more line down. You got one more? No, that's, okay, go back. So you'll see there 100, 277 million plus the $7 million there in the, is that the debt service number, Nancy? That is a debt service number. So you go from outside of debt service, 277, 278, 290, 295, 309 for this year. So we're pretty steady in how we're spending money at the college. Any questions, Mrs. Vandegrift, on that slide? No? Okay. The next one would be the new staff that we're requesting. We talked about the 30 and a half persons. The presidents told you that each one of them has asked for help. And actually, I asked them to ask for help because I know they need it. They are extremely busy doing all the things that we need to have them do. So they really do need help in their offices. As Dr. Coppola told you, he already has a person in place that he's going to use in that role. And the other four presidents will be hiring new people to help them in their role. Tim Marshall told you about the directive information security that is required by state statute of some kind that requires us to have a person who is dedicated to security for the College of Our Information. The coordinate of institutional effectiveness is something that David Wells told you about. It's needed for the academic side of the house as well as the Assistant Director of Academic Support Services. Those two positions both go to David Wells. Facilities planning and development has three people in the budget to help with. We're slowly trying to staff our facilities department with a variety of people that we need. These are primarily professionals, they are not administrative staff. We have one faculty, a staff recruiter that's in Ms. Robinson's area. Will be working in the Human Resources Office that she told you about. Will be dedicated to helping to build a pool of adjunct faculty. All of us on the campuses are experiencing quite a shortage in adjunct faculty when the Teacher Retirement System of Texas changed its rules and will not allow us to allow adjunct faculty to teach as much as they have taught in the past. And so all the institutions across the state are scrambling trying to get enough help to cover the classes that we'll be offering in a couple of weeks. So that person's going to work on that. We have a learning lab manager on one of the campuses. We have a half-time registered nurse on the campus. The senior office assistants, two of those, two and a half, two full-time, the one half-time. Four student development associates, one instructional associate. On one camp, four on one campus. And most of these instructional positions, as you have heard from the presidents, have come about because of standardization. And that standardization is based upon the number of students served. And we have an instructional television specialist that's going to be working in the ITV program on Northeast. Two other administrative office assistants working in the various places on the campuses. A half-time administrative assistant, a financial aid associate, and the Mogo driver outreach person. The person is, Dr. Black has one person already that was working half-time and she's proposing to move that position to full-time so that the person doesn't just drive, but also is available to help with community outreach as he or she moves throughout the county. So with the exception of the first position there, assistant to the president, and I guess you could call it a quasi-administrative, but the rest of those are not. They're all support staff positions in one way or the other. So that makes up the total of the 30 and a half new positions that are going to cost about $1.4 million. The next slide. Wanted you to see, I showed you this slide. We didn't have all the numbers the last time on what community colleges, the Big Ten, are expecting as of today to give in the way of salary increases. And you can see 2% Alamo, 2% Austin, 4% Collin, 2% Dallas, 3% El Paso, 5% Houston, 4% Lone Star, 3% San Jac, 3% South Texas. And ours is to be determined. The next slide is the summary of my proposed salary increase, where I'm asking you to consider a 3.5% salary increase and along with the concomitant fringe benefits that will cost us $6.7 million to increase the hourly rate for adjunct and credit faculty that teach in overload as well as summer school by $1.50 per hour to increase, I'm sorry, to cover the cost of promotion and rank and salary adjustments as well as department chair stipends to $375,000. We're proposing to pay department chairs based upon their nine-month salary. We made significant changes to their pay last year, but we did not come full circle on that and pay them the full amount that they would be making had they been working during the regular time. And all of our department chairs, pretty much all of them, presidents, correct me if that's not correct. Pretty much all of them are needed for sometime during each summer. Yes, in order to get rid. So they have standard contracts now for 10 and a half months. Is that correct? I'm sorry? 10 and a half month contract. We have a handful of department chairs that work 12 months by accreditation standards. The accreditation bodies requires that we have somebody here 12 months, but it's not that many of them. So then the total salary increase would cost $9.4 million. The next one. That's not my slide. It must have been Mark's. Is that the end of that? I have more recommendations to come. But while I'm getting to the other recommendations, I've called on all the Kelp members to give you their spells. And now I'm going to call for the faculty led by our very able Ms. Christina Miranda, who is going to speak on behalf of the faculty request to us. And I don't know if that slide is in there or not, but you may remember what those items were. You remember?
Yes, I believe so. Okay. I had an hour notice before the meeting that I was speaking.
That's enough for a pro.
In reference to our proposals, we had requested 5% salary increase. We had requested a $5 pay increase for the adjuncts. And then we did request the proposed changes to the department chair budgets of salaries. And so that was accepted as we had proposed. Starting last summer, the chancellor has included us in this many, many meetings in the summer. My running joke is when people ask me what I'm doing in the summer, I'll say, "I'm in a meeting." I'll be in a meeting. And we were. And if you want a very good example of faculty engagement, which we are increasing, you can look to your 10 Kelp members because last summer, we were called upon to go to these meetings. It was not a previous suggestion, invitation, or requirement. And the president stepped up and we, our current presidents and the elects at the time, we stepped up and we came to those meetings. And it really has provided an input that was not there at those meetings before. So we appreciate it. We don't always agree, but we at least have seen how the process works and where these numbers come from. And we are very appreciative of how the Kelp members and especially our campus presidents are great advocates for their campuses. And so we see that. We're especially happy about the recruiter for adjuncts. That's greatly needed. We very much need that help to recruit quality adjunct instructors. We're also very excited, the presidents don't know it yet, but we're also excited you're getting assistance because that our budgets and our abilities falls under their purview. And so we're actually hoping to develop a strong relationship there as well. So surprise. But we understand through the budgeting process where the proposals came from and we support them and we hope to be there in the future.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Christina. Okay, now to the budget summary. You will see that, I went through that part before, Shelley. So just go to the next, yeah, the next one. To the recommendations. I said before, 3.5% salary increase for all employees that will cost $6.79 million. The second recommendation is a $1.50 an hour increase for adjunct credit faculty and full-time faculty overload. Transfer of $467,920 from Student Ticket Spaces account to the salary account and use that money to hire 10 new advisors. You've heard Dr. Gates-Black talk about how those advisors would be used throughout the district. You heard Mr. McClendon say that there is no proposed maintenance and operation tax increase. A very slight increase to take care of the debt service, which would leave our 2013-14 tax rate at 14.9 cents per $100 of evaluation. The next recommendation is no change in the tuition for in-district, out-of-district, nor non-resident students. Just watch that red ball as it moves to the center of the stage. We think the budget for 2013-14 will help keep us as the college of choice for academic excellence and lifelong learning. I think you have been given tonight a very comprehensive look at what we plan to do for 2013-14. And I think you will agree that everything you have seen goes directly towards student success because that really is what we're all about here, is student success and finding ways to do a better job of how we interact with our students. And with that, board members, I would ask for your questions, your comments, your guidance.
Well, madam. It was nice to say thanks to all of the staff who have collaborated to over these five weeks to give us up today and bring this budget presentation to us. And it seems like everybody's in a happy place and we should be able to move forward.
Mark, will you go back upstairs, up there again? No, Mark, I just have a question. We've talked about.
Come to the mic, Mark.
I think, Mark, the presentation that you made initially, of remarks you've made before was one of your best presentations that you've made and I appreciate it. It made a lot of sense to me, what you said and some of the analysis and so forth. What in the long term, I know we have an implementation committee and we're going to be thinking about how we evaluate capital projects and so forth and so on. But we do have a culture of pay-as-you-go, which you say has worked with us very well. And I agree with that, being debt-free is very impressive. But how sustainable? How sustainable do you think our financial stability is in context of expenses going up? We're going, we're growing. We've got to grow. We've got to build. We've got to grow. We're going to, you know, we're, increasing salaries is something that's just part of the price of doing business sometimes. And we're going to be deciding that. I'm not making a remark on that. But how sustainable, assuming our, of course, that's depending on how our economy goes. But how sustainable is our financial stability in context of rising expenses? You know, it's going to rise, lower, you know, and sources of income becoming more limited and pay-as-you-go? I mean, something's got to, something, to me, something's missing here. Something that's, we're going to be squeezed out of really being robust and growing and thinking outside of the box and so on.
Mr. Greenhill and the trustees, and I think we've talked about it. I've listened to the chancellor and I'm also a hardline conservative.
I know that.
I mean, and so I'm going to give you my thoughts. And I think the chancellor, a fiscal conservative is what I mean. Pay-as-you-go is certainly a way to maintain in an organization. But this board of trustees is at some point in time is going to be able to have to make a determination that as growth keeps going on and you want to make everybody available to Tarrant County College, there would be a point in time that pay-as-you-go may at some time require that we look at maybe funding some operations. At the same time, I want you to know that we are striving aggressively and is as hard as we can to look at ways to reduce our costs, to increase more efficiencies. So there's always more possibility there. At the same time, we are looking, if you want to look at a paradigm of five years or 10 years, my personal opinion is that right now, the educational world is changing. You may look at it, for example, in the text materials, what we are considering for students to read. We're talking about in a period of maybe seven years, the book as we know it today will not exist. It'll be a digital type of learning material or learning thing. When you look at this paradigm, this change in our nation and throughout the world, the physical presence, when we, if you listen to Raymond Paredes, which is the commissioner on education, he's saying, and this is what he's saying to the, how you say, the four-year and research institutions, you may find yourself with an excess of space because the world as we see it is changing, is becoming a little bit more virtual than we are. Now, will that occur in five years or 10 years? We don't know. But if you crisscross the virtual changes with what you're looking at, some of the major institutions may find themselves with a lot more real estate space than they actually embark. Now, will, if the trustee board says, "I want to open the door to everybody who comes to our doorstep," there will be a time where pay-as-you-go will not suffice. I agree with you 100%. That will not work because inasmuch as we're reducing our expenditures, we're not going to be able to reduce it and grow in terms, if we see the growth. And some of the points that you have to look at is right now, our country is talking about immigration. It's talking about a change in immigration. If that change of immigration pattern was to happen, there's probably 50,000 Latinos who could potentially come. who could potentially come to a community college. If that happened, of course, we would have to go to look at probably some debt service. We would have to look at using our fund balances. We would have to look at something like that. A dramatic change like that, you could not have that as pay-as-you-go. What we have said is, what it has done is, it has sustained us to be able to have a very strong balance sheet. And what we believe is that even if you do have to go out and look at some initiatives, we still have not existed all our revenue capabilities. But given to the place that educational systems do not produce the same revenues as a corporate world, there will be a necessity of us looking, at looking at some, probably some debt services to build in the directions that we see that will be necessary. That's what I see on the long horizon. But I think that what drives, for example, for me to do our fiscal analysis will be some of the comments that the trustees say. For example, if you're looking at building more facilities that require technical requirements, yes, we're going to have to, we may have to fund some of these. On the same thing, as we're talking, Mr. Greenhill, and as I go throughout the district and other trustees and everything, we're trying to make partnerships with educational K-12 institutions, Mr. Greenhill, that are going to supply us with a real estate that we can use to teach. And so, and not, if you looked at the organizations that felt had the highest, lowest coefficients were the ones who had less asset and most debt. And so, that is a concern. We would have to balance on the necessity that the board says. Will pay-as-you-go be sustainable if you continue at a growth and you allow everybody? Probably not. But I hope that we can consider using some of our fiscal stability in how we grow, rather than just going disproportionately. I want to correct one comment I did make to Ms. Vanagryff. I just showed, just last month, Alamo in San Antonio went ahead and passed a general obligation board of $453 million. My concern is, trustees and certainly Mr. Greenhill, is when I look at the amount of interest and the amount of debt that is being put on the, the pressure on these some institutions, I am concerned. I would not want to be in that position, but if it is the board's decision to go into that direction, we would certainly do it.
I'm, of course, am not suggesting that. I am just
Yes, sir.
I'm just thinking, okay, expenses are going up, we may or may not increase salaries and so forth and so on. I just, and I do agree with the, I know you're, what you're working on is not putting us into a ditch, if that's the word that the chancellor used one time. I know, I trust you on that. I'm just, I'm just trying to get this stuff formulated in my own mind.
Yes, sir. Did I answer your question, Mr.? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, very much. I will have to tell you, board members, that I don't necessarily share all of his, I don't necessarily share all of his, and I don't mean this negatively. I mean, with all of the board members, you've heard me say this. Mark touched upon some of the things that are absolutely on the cusp right now. Higher education today looks very different from the way it looked 10 years ago. 10 years from now, it's going to be even more different. I don't, I don't know why Alamo and Houston and all of them are building so much. I don't know. Because I think Dr. Paredes is absolutely right. You may find yourselves in a few years with a lot of extra real estate on your hands that you don't, I still maintain that at Tarrant County College District, we ought to be looking very, very closely at how we serve more students with what we have. And I just think that makes really good sense. Now, we talked a little bit this afternoon in the executive committee meeting about pay-as-you-go, and my comments to the three board members in that room was, yeah, we may not be able to keep pay-as-you-go the way we are going right now unless you're willing to do something different. But now, when I say that, I'm not talking about, now, you may decide as a board that you want to build another campus. I don't know. That may be something that you may decide you want to do. We've talked for years about the possible need of a campus out in the southwest area. But if you decide you want to build another campus, you're probably not going to pay cash for it. Unless you start today deciding that you are not going to do a lot of other things. The way we're going right now, you could say, well, we spend on average, I was looking at the numbers, and we spent somewhere around, we've had in the total budget around 70 to 72, $3 million every year on infrastructure things. When we were adding up all the money for pay-as-you-go, we weren't spending that kind of money on infrastructure. We were spending a little money, but we weren't spending anything like that. We were putting it aside. So, at some point, the board has to decide, who do we want to be when we grow up? And how do we want to get there as we do it? Do we want to leave some things aside? One of the reasons why Nina Pettis' team is always on the go, on the go, because they're still playing catch-up from number of years back. You know, we still have, as somebody said, furniture from 1967. The first day we opened the campus. See, those are the kind of decisions that you have to make. And I don't worry about falling in the ditch, because we have decisions to make. You have decisions to make as a board, and you give me instructions. You give our staff instructions, no, we don't want to do this, or we don't want to do that, we want to do. And let's just take, since we're talking about it, $9.6 million for the salary package. You may say, I don't want to do that. I want to put $9.6 million in a fund over here so we can have pay-as-you-go. So, the question you ask yourself is, what do you get for that? How long do you put the money aside for pay-as-you-go and not reward the people who are trying to get you where you want to go? Those are always the decisions. The pot is always finite. We have X number of dollars, and then you, as our leaders, tell us how you want us to spend those dollars. It is really just that simple. Now, I haven't even used the T-word. Because nobody wants to talk about the T-word, which is another way you can raise funds. But you know, nobody wants to talk about that. So, I'm not talking about that either, but when you start looking at options, you put everything on the table. You don't just put some things on the table, you put everything on the table. And as a board, you decide which one makes the most sense for a Tarrant County College. Now, I happen to think that it makes a lot of sense for us to try to do some things from all of those packages. You know, we, y'all suggested last year that we set aside X number of dollars to put in this fund to kind of build it up. Well, we built it up, and along comes Bell Helicopter who said, "We'll give you a building for $16 million." Well, if we hadn't had $16 million, we couldn't have gotten that building. We had just finished a few months before, talking about the needs that we had, it was going to cost $100 million. So, now we've got a building for $16 million. And so, then comes along an opportunity for an early college high school on the southeast campus. Unfortunately, we didn't have any spaces on southeast like we had on northwest to start on the shoestring budget. Plus, we were talking about starting with a full complement of students, where on northwest, we started with few students. So, there are opportunities that we've had, because we've been very cost-conscious as we've gone along about saving the money. But, I mean, you, if you look at how we got, and this is the thing you have to think about. If you look at how we got to pay-as-you-go, how we got to build the fire training technologist center, that was the first facility we built and paid cash for it. How we got to build that center, how we got to do a lot of very major renovations on the campuses, built a new facility on southeast campus, built Trek, bought Trinity River, all of that was cash. Well, after a while, the cash begins to go down, 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 but look what you got for that. And so, if the board decides it wants to continue to pay-as-you-go, it means that we look at how we finance the pay-as-you-go pot. That's, and we won't get there with $5 or $10 million a year unless you're going to let something else wait for a while. And that will be a decision that you will need to make. From my recommendation, I still think our focus has to be on how we serve more students who come to us with the same facilities that we have. Now, we'll still have to do renovations and all of those to the facilities, but how do we serve them? And how do we, you know, where do we get the money to build an early college high school on northeast campus, which we need? You know, that's, we can, we can manage that with the way we go. We can manage a $13 million project pretty well. We can manage a $40 million or $50 million as pay-as-you-go, but we can manage some of the other things. So, those are the questions, I think, that you'll need to answer. No, ask another one, Mr. Greenhill.
Ask another question.
Sure.
This is hypothetical. One of the issues is going to be 3.5, and it's $9 million.
Well, that's not
Well, what, okay.
Okay, it's $6 million.
$6 million.
Six point
If you had a crystal ball and you were thinking what the KELT members would want with that $6 million, what are we giving up for that, if anything?
A lot. I told you earlier that we met, after we left one day, we thought, well, let's look at this, let's look at that. And then we got together and spent about an hour and a half on the phone, taking out things that we thought we could do. The first thing we did, Nancy Chang went through the budget and found places in the budget, I gave that to you the last time, you weren't here, Mr. Greenhill. But we gave, we gave, Nancy found places, well, she looked at a five-year, took a five-year backwards look, and say, for five years, we've had money left over in this budget, or this budget, or this budget, or this budget. I think we can take some of that money and put it in another pot without hurting the department or the project or whatever. Perhaps the biggest thing you gave up, you saw that one number I put up there, 130, what was the number, 137 new positions? And we got it down to 30. That's what the biggest, so you asked, what did they give up? Well, they gave up a lot of things that they thought they would like to have, but at the end of the day, they said, we'd much rather give our employees a little bit more money and make do with what we've got. We think we can make it. The 30 and 1/2 positions, they said, we think we got to have those. And so, we kept those in place. Any, some of the new things that we wanted to do, and you all can help me think of some of the things that you marked off your list, because I'm not remembering all of them, but there were a number of things we said, we're not going to do that, we're not going to do that, we won't do this, we won't do that. And they agreed, and that's what, that's what happened. We can go back and get the list, because we do have it. Sure. Mr. Heed?
My comment is on going from 3 to 3.5%, and that's my concern. I think we have a very fine institution. We have incredible employees. They need to be paid, and they should be paid well. And I think they are paid well. We're at the top of the salary scale in the top 10 colleges. A 3% increase to me is totally satisfactory. If you look at the average of the nine other colleges, the average increase is 2.8%. I think if we went up 3%, that would save us roughly, as I remember the calculation, a million dollars, that we could do something else that perhaps is more directly associated with student success, one of those items that you mentioned. And that's my only concern. I'm very happy with the rest of the budget, but I would prefer to see a 3% increase instead of a 3.5.
I guess we're, I did, I want to point out, by the way, it's not 30 and 1/2 new employees, it's 40 and 1/2, because you're adding 10 academic advisors. So, really, we're looking at 40 and 1/2 new employees, not, and we still haven't really resolved the issue either of, we had said that we're going to use the tuition increase, at least for a while, for sticky spaces, and we're departing from that. I'm still not too crazy about that idea, but I see the, I see the value of what you want to do.
Mr. Carter, excuse me, you want to box about that with me?
A big pardon.
Would you like to box about that?
I think we already did, but a little box. By the way, I also agree that we, that we're very near the end of pay-as-you-go with these particular things. We've nibbled and nibbled away at it and use more and more of the excess funds for basic M&amp;O. So, we're very close to the, to the end of that particular area where we can make major, well, I think we are at the end of it, where we can make major purchases, expenditures with a pay-as-you-go system.
I wasn't fudging on the number of employees, Mr. Carter. I was, the number 30 and 1/2 were the number that we got out of the budget, the budgeted funds. The recommendation was made that we should consider using some of the sticky space money to hire
Hire 10 people.
To hire 10 people, but
40 and 1/2, no matter how you cut it.
Except that I designed the budget, the number of people in this budget. If the board says, "We don't want to do that," it doesn't affect my budget at all. And so, that's why I kept it separate, because that's money that's coming from the sticky spaces to go there. So, I'm not trying to fudge at all. I mean, I want you to know that anything I present to you, I want it to be totally transparent. Anything that I present to you, I bring it to you with the full understanding that the board has a right to say, "I like this, I don't like this." And also, anything I bring to you has been vetted extremely well through all of the members of the KELT, as you can see. So, I'm not trying to fudge at all. And I don't have a problem if you want us to, if the board agrees that you want to use the $460, whatever thousand dollars it is of sticky space money, I don't have a problem with asking Nancy, "Put it over in the budget and show 40 people instead of 30." I don't have a problem with that. Because I surely do want the public to think that, you know, we're talking out of both sides of our mouths, because we're not.
Well, Madam President, if there are no further questions, of course, we'll ask you to vote on the budget for, at your meeting on Monday. And we will, if you have any further instructions for me, I certainly am ready to accept those. Okay. Thank you very much. And we don't have Angela, we don't have anything else. We have, we have food for the board members over here, if you know you didn't get to eat earlier. KELT members, faculty, administrators, thank you all so much for your great, your great help. Ricardo, can I see you for a quick minute?